Ben get started here, it's five thirty, we'll do roll call right now.
Okay, Mary Benton.
Yes, here.
Charles Jennings. Mel Coon.
Present.
Andy Patton.
Here.
Scott Rogers.
Here.
Dottie Smith.
Here.
Chris Tackett.
Here.
Brian Wolf.
All right, first off, the decoration, I just asked anyone at this time on the planning commission make a decoration of any conflict of interest or any outside communication that would maybe influence their decisions to not only hear all sides, but also come to a fair decision. Seeing none, public comments, anyone wishing to address the planning commission on items that are not on the agenda can speak now, I assume most or if not everyone's here to hear about the public hearing, so if there's anything else outside of that. I don't see any. Next up will be consent agenda, and it is a September eleven, two thousand eighteen meeting minutes, and we all should have gotten those in the mail, and I believe by possibly email.
Motion to approve.
For approval.
Second.
Mary motions, Andy seconds, all those in favor to approve the September eleven, two thousand eighteen meeting say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? At this time, we will go to item number four, and that is to hold a public hearing to consider the request for a rezone from a C two restricted commercial district and an R two medium density residential district to a C three general commercial district at fourteen oh eight, fourteen eighteen, and fourteen twenty North First Street. With that being said, I'll entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Andy moves, Chris seconds, all those favor, I don't know if we need to vote on that, so, all those in favor open the public hearing. Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? At this time, we'll have the city present and go from there.
Okay, the requested for you was filed by NKS Restaurants, sell C, to rezone the property as was said before, fifteen fourteen oh eight, fourteen eighteen, and fourteen twenty North First. There's actually two different zoning districts that resulted from, the fourteen twenty is C two, and the other two properties are R two, and the proposal will be the, send it to G, or sorry, C three, general commercial district. Fourteen oh eight and fourteen eighteen currently do have single family homes on them, fourteen twenty is vacant today, the area around it is residential to the south and west across First Street, and then commercial to the north and to the east of the property. The property rezoned is adjacent to commercial property that's along Summit Street, it's about half an acre, as part of the project, the single family homes would be taken down. So is it consistent with regulations, is the intent of commercial zoning districts to provide for areas of compatible commercial and service businesses, so the change would be consistent with the intent purpose? The neighborhood character, there's a car wash to the east, again, single family homes are to west and south, and to the north, immediately to the north of the vacant lot. So since the area is already partially commercial, staff's opinion that proposed development would negatively affect it, as long as proper mitigation controls are put in place. Is this rezoning necessary for this, it is, part of what they're doing is they need a little bit more property than just the Summit Street property, where the car wash is, two of those properties are of course residential, so would need to be rezoned in order to have a fresh mount present on that site. So area zoning, north side is a C two zone, the vacant lot is C two, there is R two, medium density to the south, and to the west, the lot to the east, the car wash lot is C three, to the west is also R two. There is a convenience store to the north, as well as an office, I believe it's a financial planner's office, and then there's agenda's offices southeast, and the rest of the area is all residential, predominantly single family, I don't know if there's any there view buses. As part of the mitigation, because there is residential in the area, staff recommends the privacy fence along the First Street frontage, and then zoning regulations actually require the fencing to be along the residential properties to the south, they're going to make, so. And then, and then I added also, lighting should be directed so that it doesn't shine into the neighborhood, especially since they're residential. Is it compatible with the area? The use of a restaurant would be permitted under C three, the district would allow some higher intensity uses besides the restaurant. C two would work for this project, however, they're combining it with the lot that currently has a car wash, the car wash had to be zoned C three when we redid our regulations in two thousand fourteen, because that was, they're not allowed in a C two or smaller, so, that's why I proposed that we have it all the same zoning district, so it's all C three as opposed to some of it C two and some of it C three. And also additional allowances, any additional allowances that a C three district allows would be hopefully offset by the proper site planning. Suitability of current restrictions, the property is currently rezoned for restricted commercial use and residential use, it's a split zoning, I'll show you on the map what happened by that. Proposed project requires additional land to develop, they don't have quite enough of a lot, so they would just to have the car wash. The property is immediately adjacent to other general commercial uses, and appears that this block anyway is suitable for commercial development. Side of, wonderful phrase there. Is the property vacant or has it been vacant? That first, that fourteen twenty has been vacant for as long as I've known, and it's probably best suited for commercial. The two houses that are there are in the eighty to ninety year old range, they're starting to show their rates are not like on the demolition list or anything like that. If this didn't happen, if this project, the rezone was not approved, the commercial property would probably stay vacant for this foreseeable future, and the houses would stay there, and probably could be good stuff, without the issues, and continue for quite some time. Public facilities due to its location, all of the utilities are readily available at site, in fact, they're going to have to relocate some of the utilities because they're a conflict with their projects, so they're definitely there. Police and fire will not have any issues, and they have seen the site plan, because we've had our technical advisory committee meeting already, so, with a few adjustments, we'll be fair. Is there other land that's available that's commercially zoned? Yeah, there is, however, a lot of it is not right on a commercial corridor like this would be, certainly a restaurant would require slightly higher traffic levels, and this is kind of building into the future land use, so, one of the goals in chapter eight of the comprehensive plan calls for providing adequate area for convenience, safe, and appropriately scaled commercial development. I noted that one because this project is going to be on an existing commercial corridor, we're not expanding our commercial districts further, this project is not going to, project will also be scaled for the area appropriate, we have plenty of parking, we will have to look at access management a little bit, but it's something that will be addressed. Public health, safety, and general welfare should not be negatively impacted, as long as any of the other person has. I didn't receive any formal public comment, just a little bit, but it wasn't a lot, you'll get, you could probably hear some more from the public interested, and I'll leave it up to them to say anything addition to that, hopefully fence will alleviate some of the concerns. Here is the area that's going to be rezoned, or is proposed here, about to take, fourteen oh eight and fourteen eighteen, of course there you can kind of see that the houses are there, and that fourteen twenty is the vacant lot, and of course off to the east is the existing, like I want a car wash, and then Casey's is off to the north. Future land use for the area, fourteen twenty was designated as commercial, oh eight and eighteen were residential primarily, the reason we did that was because the hen house is not, and we didn't, really couldn't predict what might happen in this block in the future. My image is that is not a major issue. This is the zoning for the area, as I mentioned earlier in my presentation, got residential to the south zoning, and then to the west, and then it's all commercial to the north and to the east. Little green hatch, there's actually a little bit of flood plain on the Casey's property, but it doesn't affect this property. I did include this just to give you a general idea of where things are, this is obviously subject to change, but the proposal was to have a drive on First Street, and then two on Summit Street. The discussion and attack was that this would be a right out only exit, because it is so, it's actually, at the beginning, I think the median is right in here, where you, where the left turn, or that, I'm sorry, the right turn lane starts, so, it would be almost impossible to turn that, out of that anyways, and we're trying to, we want to try to avoid any kind of accidents, some people trying to turn that out of that.
No, that's not part of the packet.
No, I didn't include that, I apologize, but.
Isn't there, is there a light up where Casey's is, that corner of Casey's?
No.
There isn't a light there?
The street light?
Mm-hmm.
It's on Kansas.
Control light, okay.
And a couple pictures of the side, of course, this is the car wash, I don't know where the car wash is, I saw that from Google, because, well, it's a quick picture, this is the, what we're really looking here is the vacant lot at fourteen twenty, first bag of cars, and these are the two houses that would be affected by this project, the first two there. This is looking north on First Street, residential off to the left, and then the office there to the, at the corner at Palmetto, and off to the south, and of course you can see, this is definitely a residential neighborhood today. So, based on that, Mr. Recommendation is that, that the rezones to C three for these three properties should be approved, based on the following conclusions, the adjacent property is commercial, yes, there's some residential to the south, so that's totally appropriate, that the development appears compatible with the area, it seems to be trending to commercial in this general area, part of the property has remained underutilized for a number of years, the project should not adversely affect it, as long as we focus on some of these site controls. It's sided in an existing commercial corridor, public health safety should not be impacted with this kind of project. And as I mentioned before, the C two zoning would technically meet the requirements, but the desire was to have the whole eventual property all in the same district, access C three. So, for you, of course, is the motion, I recommend the full approval, but you could just as easily change the district to only C two, if that's what your desire, if you completely deny it, or you could.
Thank you, Josh, is there anyone that would like to speak on this, we'll try to, I don't know how many people are wanting to speak, we'll try to give you enough time to speak and get your points across, but it don't look like it's too crowded, so we'll give everyone a couple minutes to speak and go from there, so, if you do like to speak, we just ask that you state your name and address, so we have it for records, so.
I should also add, I should have said this, Jason Wolf with Meridian Restaurants Unlimited is here, representing the app.
Sounds good. Do you want, Jason, do you want to speak, I assume, do you want to speak right now at anything, or just let the public speak, and? All right, who, anyone want to speak on behalf, yes?
Do you have a printed form of that plot?
Don't have one, I'm sorry.
Would you go ahead and print some off?
Yeah. Ken Harter, I live thirteen thirteen North First Street, most of you know me. Mister Eastman knows me, Charles knows me, and what I want to speak to is your exit on First Street, because what happened to me in my neighborhood really was a disaster. Y'all know Family Dollar, exits it out right into my property, headlights at night shine into the house every time a car comes out of there. The only thing that me and my neighbors wanted, when that went in, and I was at, Mary, I was at the zoning appeal meetings, spoke, commission meetings, talked to Josh White many times, we just wanted that wall, so that the traffic wouldn't come through and help dead in the sand. So here again, these people in this neighborhood are going to be exposed to headlights and traffic coming into that neighborhood, and I just want to explain a few things to you, when they come out of the business in front of me, they'll be opening packages and throwing it out the window, I pick trash up every day in my neighborhood, it is not the neighborhood, it was before that was allowed to go in. Now, if that had been a solid wall, where the traffic in this couldn't come out and the headlights don't shine, we told you all that in the beginning, so I don't know if there's anyone here that lives on North First Street there, glad to meet you, this is what you're going to be exposed to. The dumpster was put at the back, right in front of it, at the back of that property, that's been an issue for four years now, since they opened, trash wind blowing, stuff not put in the dumpster, and just to give you a kind of a heads up, semis will come down that street, even milling company that hauls grain, I've seen them come in there at night and pull in on First Street, pull in, go in shop, come out with two bags, loaded grain trucks. These are the things that's happening because of access to First Street, now if there was no access to First Street, I'd be seventy-five percent quieter than I am right now with what goes on, I'm sure you guys understand that. As big as that piece of property is, and the two entries, you're going to create issues for those people like happened to me. Mister Eastman apologized in a commission meeting, Charles Jennings apologized to me about the noise and the lights, and maybe they didn't think it out far enough, in, at the time that this happened, I do appreciate that, Mister Jennings, I did get that from you, and I got an apology from Dwayne, that the next time, it was too late now, they couldn't do anything about it, but the next time, those are the words Dwayne used, then we need to study this. Anyway, that's about all I've got to say, and I'm glad there's somebody here that lives on North First Street, I want them to feel my pain, and my neighbor's pain, and what, what we're suffering. You guys don't live there, I retired, bought that place, and invested every dime I had to draw my last breath on North First Street, and then this is what's happened to us.
Josh, do you have a legend for this?
I don't.
Is five the dumpster?
Yeah, that's.
Is two the grease receptacle?
Uh, I'm not sure what two was, but that's five was, this was, this is going to be altered.
And number, number two's the grease receptacle?
Probably. Well. That's, that's correct, oil would be contained in that area, the same area as the dumpster.
What you'll also have there at this eatery, is you're going to have large trucks pulling in there to eat, they're going to pull along the side somewhere and park, and I guarantee you, they're going to exit on the First Street, they are not going to get out of there any other way, unless you make a change, so that doesn't happen, because this is what's going to happen, I could go on for quite a while, and I've lived there since that business went in next to me, and I can tell you a lot of stories, I knew in the beginning this would happen, I wanted that dumpster up front, kind of like Casey's is on South Summit, at least if it was up there, they might maintain it better, because it's more visible, but it's set right back in my front yard, right in front of me, that street's only twenty-eight foot wide. If I can answer any questions for you, that's off the top of my head, that's what's happened here, and I, what I remember is the promises and the.
How's that impacted your property value? Were you asked ahead of time, when you do a zoning change, didn't require you asked adjoining property about the zoning change?
How this went down, well, is I had good neighbors across the street, and they said, Kenny, we've been approached to sell our property, oh, great, if you have an opportunity, and, and they got good money for their property, first thing I did was run down and talk to Josh, you know, if there's going to be a business going there, just don't put it on First Street, this before they ever signed and sold their houses, I don't know a thing about it, every month I went up there and I asked Eric Bros, and I asked Josh, what's going on, we don't know, I get one of them in the mail, showing exit on the First Street, that's the first time they admitted to me that this was happening, that's what happened to me, I asked questions, no answer, this went on for months.
Well, I think we're pretty transparent here, you need to address us, don't address the audience.
I'm sorry, but these people need to, I guess they can hear me, they need to know what's going on, but this, this is what's happened on, I don't want to see the rest of First Street destroyed, it affects the community on that side, big time, and I think we can address this, they told us in the future that, well, we'll have to make changes next time, I haven't got anything else to say, unless you got a question for me, I just want the public to understand.
Noted.
Thank you, appreciate your time.
Thank you, thanks, Ken.
On this drawing here, those elongated rectangles towards the back, is that designed for truck parking? Are those supposed to simulate trucks?
Parking.
Where?
Oh.
On the driving, those are cars.
Those are just cars?
Cars bumper to bumper.
Okay.
Let's just show them the flow pattern of the drive through.
Anyone else like to speak? Come on up, yeah, you're good.
Anthony Bud, me and my wife would live at fourteen twenty-one North First, so we're going to be just west and north of the proposed drive, coming off First Street.
Sure, the opposite side of the street.
Off, yeah, opposite side of the street, what I've noticed right now even, with some of the KG and East trucks and stuff that come, and they like go grab stuff at Casey's or other large trucks, sometimes throughout the day, I drive by and I see that they park, which would be just right across the street from my house, they line First Street right there, Josh, where's the proposed dumpsters, or the dumpster going to be?
The last conversation is actually to move that to the northwest corner.
Showing number five right now.
Yeah.
Yeah, he, he said that they're going to talk about moving it to the northwest corner, which would put it right across from almost, not directly in front of my front porch, but still, so if I get a wind out of the east, I'm going to be smelling dumpster, I mean, I don't, I'm not proposed to this going in, but I'm proposed, because I have five kids, I'm proposed to the increase in traffic on my street, property value going down, my grandparents, our grandparents lived in that house, and we're, we've been living there for seven or eight years now, and we're currently in the process of buying the house, actually.
What year was it built?
Uh, fifty-three, yeah, fifty-three or fifty-five, so, but I mean, I just, I see, and then, I just, I, I, if I like to sit on my front porch right now, you know, have some quiet, there's going to be a drive-through, teller, you know, seventy-five foot away from me all night long, Welcome Burger King, can I take your order, over and over and over again, and right now, I can hear car doors at my neighbors, in front of my neighbor's house to the south of me, if someone pulls up and shuts the door, I can hear the door, so, there ain't even no telling if I'm going to be trying to go to bed at nine o'clock, and I'm going to continue to hear that too, along with my kids who are trying to go to sleep for school, you know, and then people turning out, and their lights shining past my kids' windows as we're trying to go to, you know, to sleep, so, I'm, I just, and I, right now, the fourteen twenty address, I keep real, during the summer especially, we keep really good care of our property, we edge, edge it and trim it, and I even went over, because they're, they're not always mowed to the best standard at all, and they let stuff grow over the curb, so I went over there and edged them, and I've swept the gutter myself, and swept it so it looked nice, I mean, I don't own that property, but it's across the street from me, and I take great pride in my neighborhood, you know, I mean, that's my home, that's where I live, so, I just, I don't know, I don't know if I could honestly say that it's not going to have a negative impact to my property, you know, by this going in, right now as it is, I pick up Casey's trash that blows in, and they have a fenced in thing all the way around, it blows into my yard and stuff, and I have to pick up, you know, little triangle paper wrapped things for pizza to go on and stuff, and, so. Yeah, I just, I'm, I'm not too, I'm not too candid at all about the drive through coming out of the side, or the dumpster being across from my house, and being able to enjoy sitting on my front porch.
How were you notified of this meeting tonight?
Huh?
How were you notified of this meeting tonight?
Tonight, a letter?
Got a letter.
Came in the mail, yeah.
Who all, who all got letters, how many were sent out?
Gets sent out to everybody within two hundred feet.
Two hundred feet of the entire radius?
Yeah. Of that property, of the property lines. I can't remember the exact number, basically all the properties along First Street in that block.
My street, the traffic on there, I would guarantee, because I sit on the front porch quite often, ninety percent of the traffic on that street is people going to Casey's right now, and it's, it's pretty heavy, so like, I would probably literally get maybe five to ten cars come through there, like, from the evening, from like, say, four to ten, and it's just the people that live to the north in the fifteen hundred block, coming and going, you know, everyone else, they turn off Kansas, come down like, whole, in that one block, they're doing thirty, and then pump their brakes, turn, and go over to Casey's, and then instead of having to try to get out on Summit, they do the same thing, they either go Palmetto to third or fourth, or they come back down across doing thirty plus, you know, so, I'm just, I'm just really concerned about that, I guess I don't, I'm not totally proposed to it, but I just, I think the traffic's going to definitely be a negative impact, the dumpster being back there, so close to other people's houses, I mean, my whole block, all of the people on my block, and there was another lady that's a neighbor to the south of me, she was going to come, but she's elderly, and it was pouring rain, but she didn't want to have to get out of the rain, but, you know, and she's going to be directly across from that drive through, so every time someone drives out at night, they're going to shine their light right on her house, and it's the same thing with her, it's, you know, property value's a big concern, you know, her husband passed away, that's all she has, is her value at home, so what's the value at home going to do when she, you know, if it goes down, and the same with us too, you know, we were hoping on making an investment in keeping family property in the family, but with this, this proposal, this property going in here, I don't know if that's going to stay the same.
Thank you, thank you, sir, and thanks. Anyone else like to speak? Yes, Mr. Tweedy.
Charles Tweedy, ten twenty-three North Ave, one of the things I think that's missing from this study is the traffic count on Summit Street, and the number of accidents from Summit, or from Kansas Avenue to C Street, I think that needs to be included in this before you even consider the rezoning, so I would suggest you table this till the next meeting.
Do we, Josh, do you know what the count, or estimated amount of traffic through this restaurant would be?
I was told by.
Well, I don't know if it'll actually load more to Summit, but I'm damn sure a little more First Street.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I was told by, at least, about seventeen thousand cars go through that intersection a day, I can't tell you how many actually going north or east or west.
If we added an extra opening on that intersection.
Exactly, now, and coming from the north, the people that want to exit onto the triangle to get onto Kansas Avenue, if there's a huge backup like there's Sonic during certain periods of time, they're stuck, they're going to have to wait for that.
Is that, well, that's, that's just north of the triangle.
Yes, but.
No, no, I'm, I'm just saying, I'm not saying.
If somebody wants to get onto that, they're going to have a heck of a time getting, getting around the other cars out. They're gonna have a heck of a time getting, getting around the other cars out. You know what I'm saying? You know how Sonic is? At certain times of the night, the line is lined up on some, on some
Sonic is
Hour of happy hour.
Yeah, Sonic is very bad. I don't know that I would expect the same kind of traffic out of this as we see during happy hour at Sonic. What, what would you say? Happy hour at Sonic's probably tops what you guys are expecting. What'd you say?
That's a busy time for Sonic, that's for sure.
It would be a busy time for any fast food restaurant through there would be those early evening, late afternoon, early evening times when they're going to eat.
And then if you allow traffic to go out the north, ex- exit, entrance, whatever, onto Summit Street going north, that's gonna create a huge problem too. If everything exits on the south side, it won't be quite so bad. But, you know, I, those are things to consider and that's pretty much all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Josh, was the point of the First Street to relieve some of the pressure off of Summit Street? I know we've got, we've been talking about issues on that stretch of Summit Street since I was a kid. So it's not, this is not a new phenomenon with the, the traffic and the wrecks and
That was, that seems basically
Is, is Palmetto, I mean, that's where a lot of the wrecks on that stretch happen, is that right? So, anything we can do to relieve that a little bit is
Wanna say something?
Could I add one thing if after he speaks that?
Mr. Chair, could you let him speak first?
Yeah, I'm gonna let, you want Mr. Harrow to speak first? He deferred. Yeah, he deferred. Go ahead, sir.
Uh, a couple things, and I'm, I'm listening to them. I, I drove that site today, obviously. Uh, Google Mac did it in the past, but I helped to drive it. You know, um, as far as property value goes, uh, the one thing I can say is, uh, that building and that property will, um, will look very good. You know, I, I saw the adjoining properties, Casey's in the dental shop? Is it a dental shop?
Yes, yeah.
And, and, uh, it, I mean, obviously it's brand new, you know? You're talking about a almost two million dollar structure going in there and it will, in my opinion, increase the property value in that area to what's already there.
It's just a franchise.
A worn down car wash.
Franchise?
Uh, I'm a franchisee, so, yeah, Burger, we do Burger King and some other brands. So, the dumpster area, I get it. There's other, other optional places, look, just looking at that site plan. Obviously, I need to talk to my civil engineer, but that's easily pull up, you know, closer to Summit and get it away from the residential. Um, so, I, I hear you loud and clear on that and that's an easy address.
Has your curb cut been addressed by KDOT?
Are they what?
Your curb, your southern curb cut, has that been addressed by KDOT? KDOT's a regulatory authority?
On the north Summit?
Yes.
No, I, I don't think so.
It's not a KDOT road anymore.
Right.
Oh, that's right, it's not, that's right. Well, how about, yeah, but we still have the same, we still follow the same KDOT density.
Generally speaking, yes.
So would this because of the proximity of four driveways, five dri- six driveways on a road, does that still fit the profile?
Definitely not ideal.
Within five hundred foot of an intersection?
Right.
It's, I'll, I'll just leave it with it's not ideal. I totally agree.
Well, if it's not ideal, if it's not ideal and it's gonna cause such a burden, there's a lot of other property in town and we'd love to see Burger King here. I would rather see a script joint with Burger King. Wonderful.
I, uh, I don't pick your property, I build the building. I can, I can tell you that there is currently access on North Summit both ways. Obviously, the traffic is not, you know, not of what a Burger King would be. Uh, we have already discussed about making the s- the south a right exit only. It only makes sense with the way that intersection is. Um,
You're crossing five lanes or you'd have to
There, you, there's no way you could turn a left. So, that's right exit only and we could choke that down a little bit. Um, you know, truly, you're looking at ninety percent business as far as any cars exiting on First Street. I, I personally, and I've been at Burger King fifteen years, work in operations and as a general manager of those restaurants before I'm doing what I'm doing. You're eighty-five percent drive through business probably. So, really, that's more of a kick out for anybody if the drive through lane
Sure.
You know, potentially gets backed up. So, so some of the dining guests can kick out and
On an average, how many, how many vehicles will run through there during the day?
Uh, well, it always depends on sales, but approximately four hundred and eighty a day.
Four hundred and eighty, you only make four hundred and
From six to midnight.
From six AM to twelve PM?
Yeah.
Twelve AM.
So during a peak, during a peak period, which would be eleven to two, is a peak period of lunch. Uh, you're looking at approximately a hundred, hundred cars in drive through. We don't have to look at customer count, but a really solid busy day is, is about a hundred cars through the drive through lane.
So at twenty percent or fifteen percent, let's say?
Uh, pushing eighty percent drive through.
Hey, no, no, I mean, I mean, if, if you're, you're overflowing First Street, approx fifteen percent of your total traffic?
Yeah, I, I would say that's a, a truly high number. Looking at the access and whatnot, 'cause most people are gonna cut, cut out through there. And then I believe that far north entrance, I, I, you know, I was only here for a couple hours, but you could easily come left out of there and not, you know, not hurt traffic on the far north. But definitely on the south, there's, there's no way.
Have you looked at other suitable locations?
I don't, I don't do property. There's some, there's too many things involved and
I understand. You have a, you have a landman. Who, who's your landman?
Uh, we work with a, a broker. He doesn't like to be called a broker, a real estate guy. His name's Barry Vane. And he just
Where's, where's he out of?
He's out of, uh, uh, Phoenix area, Arizona. But obviously, he's been doing it
Sure.
Forever and just has a lot of contacts. I don't know where he comes up with them.
Your, your big delivery truck would use that A, that First Street exit, wouldn't they?
It'd come off of Summit exit on First.
Right.
I don't know. Normally, so, when you're looking at this building, this is, that's our walk-in box. We have direct access to the exterior on a walk-in box. So normally what happens, 'cause we get them there really early in the morning, they'll come up and park here. And then, because they want the straight shot to the walk-in box and whatnot, and then they'll actually usually loop around the building. That's why this is, this is a kick out lane. So the traffic can flow and not interfere with drive through. So normally those big trucks would go out there and then exit out and turn right. And they're our customer, right? We buy a lot of food from them. So, um, if that was a big concern, we could tell them, hey, you know, you need to direct your truck, truck and come out, you know, circulate the building and not come out on First Street.
Is this standard lot size for you guys?
Uh, yeah. Can't remember what the total lot size is. Point, just over acre, one point two? Yeah, one point two. Little bit, a little bit larger, anywhere between point nine five and you.
Do you usually three?
One and a quarter.
Do you usually th- see three points of entrance and exits or usually just two?
Uh, well, I could get four if I can, yeah.
How necessary is that First Street exit?
Well, if he wants four, then
I know.
Uh, I, you know, I don't think you're gaining anything by closing off the First Street exit, let's just put it that way. If anything, you could create, uh, bad circulation on the site, I think. You know, the, the concerns being the headlights and coming in, the drive through's directed the other way. So obviously, there's gonna be some headlights coming in because they're gonna come in through the front building. But I, I really just, that flow through coming out, we've actually directed the headlights and the traffic the other way towards, towards Summit. So, I think if you close off that, I mean, there's, there's potential that, um, you just stop the cars in front of the building and then, and then you create
Your drive through is gonna use Summit. You know, it'd be silly for them to go back out to First.
They won't be able to go back out.
They'd have to circle all the way around.
They're gonna use Summit. It's your dine, it's your dine in.
All the way around and that's not practical at all.
So it's your dine in on the north side that would use A Street possibly. I mean, First Street, First Street.
But that's why I'm saying, we really, I really think you could still turn either way up here. And that's why we left this direction too. If somebody have, that gets too backed up on the First here, they can come up and come out either way. That flow through, that pass through lane isn't a normal site design without us to help kinda mitigate the traffic on it.
If we offered you an alternative site, would you, would you land your entertainment? We, we've got a lot, we've got a lot of concerns with this area of traffic. adjacent neighborhoods.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, you know, I just, I don't make that decision. I could, I could say I'm a construction guy, so they say, here's a site, start working with your engineers and architect and, you know, see what you can do.
They've already made some purchases too.
Oh, have they?
I think so.
Before it got rezoned?
It's not purchased.
Not the one on Summit. What about the ones on First? I thought two of those had been purchased.
In fact, um, you know, we haven't sent anything to the city because we write up, we wait up right up to the last minute before we ever purchase any property. Obviously, there's, you know, due diligence and, and things and talk between real estate agents and owners and whatnot, but that if it was purchased, we'd be building a week later, basically.
Where else did you have in mind? Excuse me. Where else did you have in mind, Mel?
I don't know. Haven't looked at it. It's the first time I've looked at it, but I, I can see too many drawbacks for the city. I mean, not that we don't want Burger King, but, but there's so many drawbacks to this location and, and traffic flow's a big drawback. The adjacent neighborhoods, a big drawback. Um, I, 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 I don't like it, but, uh, I like so I wanna squelch the deal, but I don't like the location at all.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I, I, I think functionally that, that the disposition here seems to be part of a more antiquated conversation, uh, functionally, that for where we are in community development, um, uh, Summit Street is, is it's outdated, it's, it's inadequate for, for repopulation or expanded population of commercial business. We've had lots of dialogue going all the way back to, uh, the, uh, about the year two thousand when I sat on the city commission and about the need for potentially, you know, some on a wish list was to do some acquisition and be able to create turn lane, uh, space all the way through there for traffic safety. That, 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 that's a big ticket item and, and obviously those things tend to get pushed aside over time just because we don't have the access to it and we lost our cash cow when we, when we, uh, embraced the new Highway seventy seven, which some still mistakenly refer to as the bypass. It's not the bypass, it's the new Highway seventy seven. But, so we move up to where we are now and I think the, the concern is that we have, we know we have. We've, we've got two decades worth of con- dialogue about the problems with Summit Street's ability to service commercial population. And it seems as though the only reasonable remedy, as it was in the past, was to use the next street over to relieve some of that distress. And, and again, we have another, uh, proposal before us with again the same remedy of using the next street over to relieve some of that distress. If we scroll down the street just a little further, you'll see that, uh, the, the redevelopment of the subway has used the next street over to relieve distress. Uh, uh, McDonald's has moved, although they don't have a northbound, north-south street behind them, has moved effectively the block over to relieve some of that distress. And I don't think we're ever gonna get away from that conversation until we, uh, the city manager or the public information officer will buy that lottery ticket that wins us like seven hundred and eighty-five million dollars. And then as a tax write-off, they donate, you know, a sizable portion of that to the acquisition cost and expansion. I'm just saying, you know, it's, that's where we are.
So you're basically saying that no matter where we go on this north Summit, I mean, this is always gonna be an issue till Summit's addressed.
Until, until
Until we figure out what we can do with Summit Street in general with regards to traffic.
And we're gonna have these recurring meetings where we're talking to residents who live one street off and, and, and they're going to say you're wanting to use our residential street to relieve the problem that's taking, that, that exists
On Summit.
On Summit Street.
Josh, when, when does an arterial become a collector?
It has to do with the traffic count. Um, once it drops below a certain number, then it will become a collector as opposed to an arterial. Is that, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, if the traffic kinda, 'cause if that collector turns into an arterial, you got another problem. Uh, the intersection between, uh, Kansas and, and, uh, First Street, then you got another problem. If they go the other way, then compound.
So if we had a forum and, and talked to the folks who are one off on First Street, not just in these two areas, but up and down there from the spillage from the Brahms, the spillage from the donut shop, the spillage from, uh, uh, the dollar store, this spillage, you know, I'm just saying, I think you would hear the same kind of discontent that we're getting, we're becoming, you know, uh, I don't know, what do you call it?
You can look on the other side of the
Summit frontage. You know, I mean, we, we, what we need's a frontage street if we can, if we can expand it.
Some of those others have been designed, like Brahms doesn't go empty onto First, it empties onto Birch. Um, so it doesn't, and there's an empty lot there with the old hospital, so it doesn't disturb anyone. The donut shop is designed where they go back out onto Summit. It's very inconvenient. You'd have to back against traffic to go out pine and out garage.
Two there.
Donut shop's only got one curb cut, two.
That's true. Well, but they typically go in on pine and then into the building.
Functionally, what I'm just saying is we're using First Street.
Well, even you look at A Street further, I mean, it's, it's happening everywhere in town till we address Summit Street. But again, you're right. Until someone wins that mega powerball.
Go home tonight.
Something, so. I mean, i- it, it's gonna be a concern anywhere on Summit Street. We put a building or someone's request building something, most locations on Summit is what you're getting at, are still gonna have this issue in front of us.
Anywhere we go, it's gonna just place somebody, it's gonna bother the next person because it's not what it was before.
But we can't
That's always gonna be a concern.
Well, yeah, yes and no.
Because we haven't resolved the Summit problem.
But there are places, some are much less stressed than other places.
But I, I would also contend that if I had a business, I would want it on Summit if I'm
Sure, in the high traffic area.
Problem I see coming from outside is you look at all the development that's to the north of there, starting with the number one developer, Walmart.
Right.
And how much that drives. And then you look at where Arby's is, where Taco Bell is, where McDonald's is. None of these guys, you know, none of these guys are, are dummies, you know? And there's a reason they, they put it in there and it, and all it has to do with the traffic count and the draw. So, when you ask about other property, I don't know. I drove up and down that street and I'm like, and then I drove this way and and you, you can tell the difference in the economy and, you know, what's drawing people out to that area and whatnot, which is for fast food.
You know, the Walmart's not necessarily God's in these little towns.
Okay, before we get too far
Yeah, all right, let's get back, yeah, let's get, any, does anyone else have anything to say? Yes.
Chair, to, 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 all right, to, to conclude, my, my thought in that is, is the mixture when we use the one off to relieve Summit Street, what, what we, what we toy with is, is how many, how many families, what, what, how many families are on First Street and A Street? So, I'm sorry, I'm just saying this. So how many bicycles and skateboards are on First Street and A Street? And how many times do we wanna play with that before we have something to be really sorrowful about with that kind of traffic moving through?
And there are success stories. Walgreens bought property and redeveloped it. When McDonald's expanded, they bought adjacent piece of property and, and relieved part of their headaches and they're on two arterials.
Right.
And then there's other developments at these major intersections that are pretty successful, plus there's lot, lot spaces in these other intersections.
Yeah, it just, it just is, it, the bigger, so we, I'm just saying, the, the framework around this is we're behind the curve on what to do with Summit Street.
Well, we're so far, we're, yeah, we're so far behind the curve.
So we're gonna have, we're gonna have this conversation every time somebody wants to take out a new spot. And, and, and Mr. Commissioner Coon here, uh, actually brought up a topic because during the KDOT's process, when, when they owned that, they were in the process of removing curb cuts and access to Summit Street for traffic safety purposes. And now you're not wanting to add one, but we're, we're, we're resolving an We're, we're resolving an increase in traffic density. Mine is, I'm just saying, we're creating First Street right now. As frontage street for Summit. I don't know if that's the intent we want to do with that or is.
Which would be fine if it were a, a, a frontage road, but it's not, it's a residential area.
Yeah, it's a residential.
So I guess one question I would have then is, do we just say no new development till we fix Summit?
Well, when you say new development, I mean, like the donut shop they're building right now, that is new development, but yet they use an existing everything. They didn't add anything. And so that isn't a development that doesn't change the pattern of traffic nor anything.
Well, it hasn't.
So we can't say no new development, but develop and structure within what we can, what we can possibly do. Cause we, we've got limitations. We don't, the, the thought of expanding, what I was sitting there as a commissioner, it was the same thing, it was exactly the same thing. We, we need desperately to do something in our summit. Until we do, we're extremely handicapped. So that's why I said, what about buying an alternate piece of property that'd be further up Summit or somewhere else? Your name alone would draw people, you don't have that.
Do we, or at least, at least is it the disposition of this board, are we comfortable with the notion of using First Street and A Street? To relieve the traffic burden on Summit? If we're comfortable with it, then, then we're comfortable with it. And, and, and you guys need to hear that and know that, but that's what we're, to me, that's what our question is.
Right.
Is, is our answer to these developments to use A Street and First Street to relieve the distress on Summit Street? If we're comfortable with it, we are. And, 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 and that's, that's the direction we go. Uh, we, we've heard, we've heard a little bit of, of. Short historical impact, uh, just a, a quarter of a mile. The other way. What way is that? South of, south of there. Okay, about, about.
Do we have any, Mr. Harter, you had said you wanted to say something. I wasn't forgetting you there. Do you have anything else, sir? Yeah, let him speak, I'm sorry. Yeah.
If I cut this off, which is talking about alleviating that, which I'm, I'm willing to do, but I don't think that's.
Yeah, that's not, that's only part of the problem. That's a part, yeah.
That ends the problem for the people.
I mean, we could cut that off and, and continue the circulation along. And we'd love to come in and like I said, bring, you know, forty jobs to the economy and build a big, beautiful. You know, restaurant and, you know.
Are you gonna bring, bring forty jobs to the economy?
Yeah, that's the approximate amount that we, we employ.
Well, that would mean more people are gonna eat here?
No, it takes forty people to, forty miles to run a burger.
There's only X amount of people are gonna eat here. So.
Well, you, any Burger King you build, you add forty employees to the economy.
But you're just taking them somewhere else.
Not necessarily, not necessarily.
Same amount of people.
Not, not necessarily.
The more people they eat.
All right, next question. That's, thank you. Yes, what do you have, Mr. Harter? Thank you, sir. Thanks, Mr. Wolf. Yes.
Thank you.
One thing I wanted to mention on traffic. In the commission meeting back in twenty sixteen, we was having discussions. Mr. Eastman, the city had done a survey on how much traffic today in front of me, over six hundred and fifty cars recorded. Let that sink in for a little bit.
Actually, it's fourteen hundred.
Sorry, what'd you say?
Currently comprehensive plan, currently comprehensive plan, two thousand thirteen, it's fourteen hundred.
Anyway, it's a lot of traffic. It's a lot of traffic. And not to go against this business, I don't, it's just dumping, you, like you stated, using the off streets. For a frontage road for access is killing us. You also, one thing you'll have here that. Will affect that neighborhood is increased foot traffic. One thing that's happened at Family Dollar, especially since Country Mart has closed. Foot traffic has doubled besides the car traffic. And at the time, this zoning board, when the developers spoke to us.
Foot traffic up and down Summit?
No, down First Street, they.
Oh, oh, your First Street, oh, yeah.
Yeah, and they walked between my house and my property off Second. They come up the alleys, they come through our property. To go to that business in front of me. That's how we're impacted. That's why the wall was so important to us in the beginning, because that would, to me, would help alleviate that. But this will see increased foot traffic. And when you have that, like I stated a while ago, they come out of them businesses and it's going on the ground, blowing in your yard. And I think with a wall there or a fence, if that's what they're gonna have and no entry in and out of there, that helps hide that for the neighbors. I don't have that, I'm wide open where I live. But the increased traffic, I wanted you to understand that, how, and that's increased now since twenty sixteen. Cause Country Mart's closed. And at the time, city, the zoning, the developer, eighty-five average a day customers. We get that in an hour. That was totally wrong. You know, there can be five, six hundred people coming in that place up there where I'm at every day. And this gentleman said four fifty. That's okay, as long as the lights ain't shining out onto the neighbors and whatever. I quit. You guys are tired of me.
You're good, you're fine, sir. Thank you. Anyone else wanna speak right now? Real fast, boy, close this thing. Yes, one more thing, Mr. Bud.
I just had something real quick to add to it. That, my. If the entrance could go away, that'd be great. And I really like, I like Burger King, I'm not opposed to it. And if the board decides that you guys are gonna end up rezoning this, I mean, probably my biggest thing, other than the drive, other than the drive on First Street. Is how loud the speakers gonna be. But say you guys do it. My only request from them would to be to go ahead and privacy fence. The north side of it too. Maybe if nothing else, to the equivalent to the back of the building in Ca- to Casey's, just for aesthetics.
Tell me, did, did your letter just ask you to attendence, or did they ask it for your opinion? Is there a question here, Senator Josh?
I think it just basically says and.
I think it just, it says that you can attend. I'm not sure if it said it for opinion or not.
Would, how much weight does his word carry?
That's up to us.
That's up to us.
I understand, but how much weight does he say carry? I mean, we ask everybody within two hundred foot. If we're not gonna listen to them, why ask them? If we're gonna listen to them and they have.
I understand, but ultimately.
Well, I, my question, yeah, I, I agree, but when you're on the commission and people complain about stuff, did you always go what they said or vote against them sometimes?
If, if frankly, if they had, if they had a reasonable, and, and sometimes, just sometimes, no.
So I mean, that's what we, that's what I'm saying, we have to vote every decision, yes.
But we didn't consider what they had.
Yeah, I know, that's what, that's what we need to, yes.
That's what we're sitting here considering. Everything they have to say is important.
That drive-through with the speakerphone, that's the only one thing, like Subway doesn't have a speakerphone. Like I said, I'm looking for this phone. I don't wanna like say be the one guy that does like, oh, I, we didn't get a Burger King in town, cause I couldn't be, you know, rude about it.
Your picture will be on the big billboard.
All right, yes. So thank you, yes.
Mr. Ch- Mr. Chair, uh, uh, with all due respect, I, I do feel like, I do feel like we've, we've listened. Compassionately to, to the concerns and the advocacy and I, I would, I would move that we would.
Close a public hearing.
Close the public hearing and move deliberations to here.
Yes, do you have anything else, real fast? Anyone else? Yes.
Do you, do you want me to talk or not?
Yeah.
Who?
Why not? Yeah, please, you're more than welcome to, sir.
We draw the motion.
No, don't worry about it. It's been a long time since I stood up here, talking to somebody. Um, I understand all of this. And the four, and you're voting to table the proposal?
We're not, we're, we haven't approved, disapproved or tabled, we haven't voted on anything.
We were closing the hearing was my proposal.
My concern is Summit Street, if they would consider taking the south exit. And eliminating any left-hand turns on Summit, that's going to increase the accidents in that time period. In, in happy hour period, is what I'm saying. Even maybe the other cars. If. Josh, whoever works with him, if you guys can find a suitable place other than this, it'd probably be a breeze. So just keep in mind all of the options, cause I'm imagining, I'm guessing that. If somebody comes up and you approve this and we don't kind of take care of Summit Street traffic without changing anything else, it's gonna be more of a problem.
And, and we did that for Brahms and we did that for McDonald's.
Yeah, so and this one's kind of difficult. Brahms is easy. This is more difficult, we got.
Well, the site we chose is far better than the cha- site they chose. So we went to Brahms.
Absolutely. So just keep in mind, I'd sure like to have another business in town, a little bit helps. So I don't want you to give up. Cause it's just a bad spot for city, city residents, like I was saying.
All right, at this time, I make a motion, we close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion's been made by myself, closed, or seconded by Charles. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, now we just need to decide how we as a planning commission want to decide on this. Or what?
What are our actions?
We can table it, approve it as is, not approve it, or send it back for more, I believe, what was that, that's basically.
Make changes.
Make changes to it.
Change. Just depends on how, what's the motion, what we wanna do, um.
What authority do we have?
I recommend it.
I would make a recommendation to the commission.
Recommend to the commission to pro- to pro-disapprove?
Any comments, permission?
Yeah. You can still, we can still say something up here.
Yeah.
Yeah, they just, yeah, we, we, this is, this is our time to.
Right.
Yeah, you can say it.
Okay. And just listening, uh, I hear your concerns and Anthony, I do use that First Street to get to Casey's, so, but I'm not going thirty mile an hour. Uh, I think it's, uh, just easier for traffic, uh, versus trying to turn left across Summit Street there. Uh, as far as businesses go, it looks like we're already at about seventy-five percent zoned, uh, in that area. I do think it will increase traffic there, but the, uh, uh, car wash is there. You know, people pulling the car wash, thought their headlights are gonna be shining. You know, onto First Street as well, so that, and Casey's as well, so that issue is already there. Uh. And then, you know, with business, when we have, uh, less places to eat, we got more, uh, concentration of, of vehicles, so. This might spread some of that out, maybe alleviate some of the, some of the issues. I do see that the ones that have been, uh. Redone, like McDonald's and things, that traffic is way better than what it used to be. So I know it's gonna negatively affect some on First Street, but as far as. Like Brahms, same thing, you know, it used to be terrible getting in and out of there with the, the, uh, access points are much better. It seems like it's fairly well thought out here, so. That's just my comment. Thank you.
We don't have the option with this being so landlocked. We don't have the option of what we had with Brahms. Brahms had Birch to come out onto. Instead of a residential plus around Brahms and back of Brahms where First Street is, that's a vacant lot. So we don't have that option. Um, McDonald's had the same situation where they could come out on a side street, radio lane, without affecting the neighborhood in back of it. So those two options, we can't use those as comparison because they're really totally different. This is landlocked on all sides. The only option is coming out on First and which does affect that neighborhood. I do like the idea of making it so that those that come out on Summit. The south exit goes only right. It would be foolish to allow a left there.
Oh, absolutely, yes.
And I, I don't even like a left on the northern exit either. It's so congested there.
Yeah, I, you know, I, and I've, I've seen a lot of newer businesses that have had those on that north. I won't name, there are businesses that have had those no left turns. Unless you have a police car sitting there with the signs of no left turn. It's, they're hard, I agree with you, Dottie, cause I think it would be nice to have them all go.
Right.
South on Summit and.
But it's not realistic.
It, for that north entrance, it's not real. I don't, I bet I think that'd be a great idea, cause I, when you see it, I know people get mad when they see those signs, but. Until they get hit turning left, they won't, you know, so.
Yeah.
I completely agree with that, Dottie. So, but, well.
I don't think there's an easy solution.
But I think that there are, for what we did for McDonald's and for, for, uh, Brahms, that, that, there, yeah, there is property available. I don't know how much landback property is on there. But distressed property or useless properties in that area is how we're able to do those other spots.
But there isn't. I mean, you think about what is available on Summit. I can only think of one area, and I don't think it's large enough, but it's where that car lot was across from United Agency. That car lot's gone out of business, those houses next to it. I think those could possibly, but it's not large enough. And they'd still be in the same place, going out on case. It's not big enough.
I, I, I'm gonna make a motion to recommend the city that we approve the request for the rezone from a C two. Wait, how's that, is that correct?
You want, you're recommending a city commission?
From an R two to C three.
You wanna rewrite this. Yeah. You wanna make a motion to approve the request for a rezone from a C two restricted commercial district and an R two medium density residential district. To a C three.
That's what confused me, I didn't know what we were moving.
At fourteen oh eight, fourteen eighteen and fourteen twenty. You wanna read that?
This was the C two, okay.
My second, here's the motion.
All right, hold on. Motion was.
Let me read it. I would like to make a motion to recommend to the city commission, we approve the request for rezone from a C two restricted commercial district and an R two. Medium density residential district to a C three general commercial district at fourteen oh eight, fourteen eighteen and fourteen twenty North First Street.
Andy makes a motion. Do we have a second?
My second is.
Ms. Benton seconded it. At this time, we will go to a roll call vote.
Further discussion.
Yeah.
Yeah, with a discussion.
After all we've said, you still think we ought to go ahead with this plan?
I do, I agree with this.
Without any restrictions added?
You know, I think that's, the, the restrictions that we need to add are up to staff at this point, uh, to, to work out, to work out, well. That's the way we handled this in the past and staff has done a pretty good job at making sure that we get what we need to do for the protection of the city.
Protection of the city, so you feel that, that even though the, the subjection of First Street and the traffic bottleneck areas.
Yes.
You're still think it's a good idea.
It's concerned, but there's not a lot of the better other options.
Under four.
Whether there's any options, I haven't looked.
The, there are restrictions that, I don't know if it's really a restriction, it's under here, that staff recommended privacy fence along First Street frontage. And along the south property line where the butts at a residential use. I would agree with Mr. Butt. It would be nice if we did something. To that north, the best we could, to get a privacy or something to kind of separate the lots out. And I agree, if, if we do go through this. We need to do everything we can. I even mentioned lighting in there. Try to get everything directed to it if we do, yes.
I'm sorry, I know it's fast. Even if the drive-through thing could be centered towards the speaker, if this is the way you guys wanna go, towards speaker through it. To the, away from the residential area, like to the south.
I, I had that thought when we looked at, that would be much better if that speaker could be angled that direction, but I'm not sure if that's, can, can you pull up the flat?
But I think that's what.
Yeah.
I think those things, at the very least, with everything, it has to be fencing, lighting.
Moving the trash receptacle.
Right.
Moving the trash. I mean, if we can be as accommodating to the neighbors.
I think the best spot for that trash is clear down here, where you've got all that parking back here on the, the far south end. I think that's the best spot for the trash. Um, I know you guys already talked about moving it, but.
Wait, 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 we're not engineers, we're not designers, we're not.
And that's why we're not putting it into the motion. That's why we're now talking to staff about that, Mel. And let them decide that. Yeah, that's exactly what we do.
But that's not how it starts. We're here to either.
The motion's been made and seconded, and, and so we need a dis- more discussion on it, but go ahead.
This is discussion on this. We cannot control what they do after it's zoned. If they rezone this thing and they do whatever they want to do within the guidelines of the city.
Right.
Fencing, whatever else. And then it's, the chips fall where they may. We have not even looked at another piece of property or given anybody else an opportunity. We did it for other places. And it worked out quite well. I don't understand why immediately we have to do this when we haven't researched any other alternatives. I would say we search another alternative. If, if this becomes the best thing to do, then it becomes the best thing. I agree. But we haven't looked at anything else. We've looked at just one proposal.
Functionally, I understand your, uh, comments, uh, Commissioner Coon, but, uh, in principle. We, these are the, these are the actions that this board has. Uh, it would be, uh, the disposition of the governing body. To determine whether or not this is an appropriate site or to direct staff to, 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 to propose alternative sites. We, we can. That's not the scope of our recommendation. Ours, and I, I think it is, is we, we've heard from people, we, things that I never even thought about is, 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 is the. Hi, may I help you? Speaker blaring into their front, uh, windows, you know, in the evening hours while they're trying to relax. I didn't give them consideration to that. And give them consideration to that, you know, but a- a- as it is functionally, we have, it doesn't really matter, we're talking about Kansas Avenue, we're, we're blending in. School, school traffic dictates that volume, okay, that's not commercial business, that's school buses and cars and moms and dads taking kids to school and picking them up every day that drives Kansas Avenue and Summit. Uh, what we're talking about, and, and, and turning north and going on First Street and going back around, really is not gonna make that much of a difference in anything, it's. It's a line of cars going out their driveway, or a line of cars going out Palmetto trying to enter Summit, we haven't changed anything, we just moved it from here to there. So, so functionally, the, the, it is, to me, hi, Matt, are we willing, are, are we ready to recommend to the governing body that, uh, that we're okay with the notion? Of this, them ex, them pursuing this venture and, and, and knowing that we're, what the stakes are, is we're, we're using another section of First Street.
We've had testimony that it really, it decreased the popular, uh, the property value, pointing to, uh, one of our commentators, it de- it decreases property value. When this was done over, over south of here, when they turned First into a, into a, uh, side road, we've also heard the headlights, the noise concerns, the increased traffic on, on a collector's street. We said that it's gonna, there's gonna be potential or obvious traffic problems this close to an intersection at Kansas and Summit. I haven't really heard anything positive, other than we'd like a restaurant in town, but everything I've heard so far has been problematic, problematic negative, and our job is to not let these things happen. To make sure that we protect the value of the property value, and make sure that we protect not only present, but also in the future, and as, as we look at, at our, in our comprehensive plan. It talks about changing how many openings are on our Summit, not adding to them, and so everything that we're looking at is contrary to what they could propose to us, in my opinion.
So, so the question is, do we want to let the governing body decide this, or do we want to? Do we not, do we not, uh, we're, right now, we're at approve the matter before us, to move on to the governing body, and, and with, I, we, we must trust. Or we can follow it along and attend the meeting when it's scheduled, and, and convey the communication, the sentiment of this, uh, but, but somebody's gotta make a decision, we, we just make a recommendation.
So, but the sentiment, the recommendation is to go have our, so, it's on the table right now.
That, that's what's on the table.
Go forward with what, what this is, even though everything presented has been.
Many things.
Against it, and not one thing has been for it, other than a restaurant, now, and, and I'm sure it'll be nice building, I have no doubt about it, you.
Forty jobs. Support the construction team in town, they'll be eating at McDonald's.
Mel, could you speak in your microphone?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, sure.
Thank you.
Um, do, do you wanna recap everything I said, I'd love to, I'd love to.
No, I had to listen to the.
I mean, what else, do we have anything else to add, Del, if we don't have anything else to add, add, we need to call, call the vote or call the question.
Just sure, I would ask if we called question.
So, at this time, no more discussion, we will vote, and as Commissioner Coon said, kinda see where the chips, or one of you guys said, see where the chips fall, that might have been you, Mr. Coon.
No, he's the chip guy.
Oh, chip guy, I knew it was one of you guys, I couldn't remember, but I was trying to keep up on all that, all right, roll call.
Uh, Mary Benton?
Yes.
Charles Jennings?
Yes.
Mel Coon?
Name.
Uh, Andy Patton?
Yes.
Scott Rogers?
Yes.
Dottie Smith?
Yes.
Chris Tackett?
Yes.
So, at this time, it's not, it's been approved to go to the city commission, that's all, that's, so now the city commission will have it on their agenda. I don't know if it'll be next, probably not next week, the week after that, correct?
April second.
April second, it'll be on April second's meeting for the city commission to take, to take up, so, um, so number four, that was action item number four. At this time, is there any other items that need to go before us or the board of zoning appeals, since we're two and one now?
There is nothing before the board of zoning appeals, I would just say that, uh, I'm planning to have an April meeting, um, we have some zoning amendments that will bring it forward to, as a work session. Not as a public hearing, that way you can actually see what it is that I'm proposing.
Okay.
Um, and then also, I have a possible application for board of zoning appeals, yeah, it's, we have an actual study yet, so we will, at this point, we'll have a meeting.
Take a reading from you. Nothing else, anyone else up here? At that time, I would make a motion to adjourn the meeting, I'll second that, all right, at that time, all those.
Adjourned.
What?
I made a motion, Charles seconded the meeting to adjourn, and at this time, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.